All right, it is now four o'clock. Welcome to the city council work session for Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. First thing on our agenda tonight is a police department promotion for Officer Michael Pope to Sergeant. Chief, you want to take this one?
Yes, sir.
You can just stand right here unless you want to face the crowd, but I don't. Where's there at? You know, you know, not long ago, somebody asked me when we were going to promote Mike Pope to Sergeant, and I said, you know what? It'll be a cold day in hell before I ever do that. So here we are, minus twenty degrees, Iowa in February. So we're kind of stuck with it. So let's just get on with it. Of course, I'm kidding. We're here today to officially promote a very deserving Mike Pope to the rank of Sergeant. He probably looks familiar to you guys. He's usually sitting in the back corner staring at you on Tuesdays and Thursdays twice a month. It's a big day for Mike and his family. It's also a big day for us because Mike's going to have more opportunities to influence our department, our culture, and our relationship with the community. We selected Mike for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, he's been around the block or time or two. He knows what he's doing. He works well as part of a team, and people are willing to follow him. In short, he's kind of the total package. He's humble, hungry, and smart. I know I've said this at every promotion I've done, and I'm not going to change now. This will probably be the last one I do. But in my humble opinion, you can't be a leader unless people are willing to follow you. Cops can be tough, a tough bunch to supervise. They're suspicious by nature. They're skeptical of anything new, and they don't follow someone who tends to talk at them most of the time instead of talking to them. You got to be able to roll with the punches when supervising officers. You have to demonstrate to them that you can walk the walk. You have to earn their trust. You have to lead by example, and most of all, you have to care about them. And Mike checks all those boxes. As much as it was about his aptitude, the other reason we promoted him was because of his attitude. His attitude about this job, the department, the city, and the community is fantastic. Good or bad, attitude is contagious. So we want to continue promoting people with the best attitudes in our organization. Mike started his law enforcement career with the Burlington Police Department in two thousand and fourteen. He worked both patrol and narcotics in Burlington before he laterally transferred to us in two thousand and twenty-one and moved his family up here to the promised land. He's been a welcome addition to our team. He's currently assigned to the Investigations Bureau, and he's done a fantastic job for us in that capacity, and we expect more of the same from him now that he's a sergeant. With that said, please join me in congratulating Mike Pope on this special day. You know, we went round and round on who was going to pin that on him. Do we need to rethink? Do we need to rethink that maybe?
Congrats, Michael. Thank you, Chief. Give them a second. Yeah. Next up, we have annual presentation from the Cedar Rapids Land County Solid Waste Agency.
Good evening, Council. We have Joe Hoenig from, he is the Director for Lynn County Solid Waste Agency, and he will be presenting his traditional report, annual report, and kind of hitting the highlights that they are seeing in regards to the city of Marion.
When I pulled up and I saw those cars outside, I'm like, man, people are here to hear about garbage. I'm excited. So from local hero to the garbage guy. So the Solid Waste Agency, brief history on us, we formed back in nineteen ninety-four when the city of Cedar Rapids and Lynn County combined our twenty-eight E agreements. We're not part of the city. We're not the county. We're a standalone agency. We have a nine-member Board of Directors with officials from the city of Cedar Rapids, two Lynn County supervisors, Supervisor Mysheid, and Ben Rogers, who will be getting a new supervisor pretty soon, and then one appointee from the city of Marion, Craig Adamson. And we operate two locations. Site two is the landfill and recycling location just north of Marion. Site one is Mount Trashmore, the closed landfill, and site three is our compost facility that's adjacent to Mount Trashmore down by Check Village. So I'll jump right into the numbers. Changes coming up here for FY twenty-six. Our landfill tipping fee is going up two dollars. It will be fifty dollars per ton. You start on July first, two thousand and twenty-five. Special waste going up a little bit to seventy dollars per ton. Those are mostly industry-specific waste that we get from the local industry around Lynn County. Bulky waste is going up to two dollars per ton, up to eighty dollars, and that's bulky waste. Those are things like telephone poles, rural ties, things that are tough to landfill. Commercial hazardous waste processing, you're going to see a five percent increase, and we only get those from what we call BSQGs, very small quantity generators. So a pretty small niche that we have here in Lynn County. Yard waste going up two dollars, thirty-two dollars per ton, and that'll be the same for our finished compost that we sell to landscapers, thirty-two dollars per ton, excuse me, still free for Lynn County residents. And then commercial recycling, this is one that will affect City of Marion. It'll be a hundred and fifteen dollars per ton, going up fifteen dollars. That's because of our contract with Republic Services, who does the processing. There's just still not much of a market for recyclables, for paper, plastic, things like that, especially the plastics. And so contamination is being another major issue that we've seen. So we're hoping with the transition that Marion has made to the new carts and the really good job that you guys did with education on there, putting the things that can't go in there, hopefully that'll make a big difference because if you ever came into our recycling building, you'll see where that gets dropped off, or residents drop off the material. If you look inside there, you see a lot of plastic bags, you see a lot of styrofoam. So we're working, and we're working with you to try and get that contamination out of it. And I put this together here. Take a look. So this is Marion by the numbers for your tonnage. The last five years, this is what is brought in by the city of Marion. Most of this comes from public services with your curbside collection, but also includes Parks Department, water, and the police, and recycling too. And I just, and you can see, guys have been pretty consistent. Two thousand and twenty, obviously, I guarantee you that's coming from the derecho. That's when we saw the big bump too, and that spilled over into two thousand and twenty-one. And then bumped up a little bit here in two thousand and twenty-four. I took a look at the numbers. You guys brought in three hundred and forty-eight tons of impacted soil. I imagine that was some big city project. So that kind of bumped up your numbers a little bit for the landfill in twenty-four, but otherwise looking pretty consistent. And then your numbers too, recycling have stayed pretty consistent as well. I'm really curious to see what the new cards will do for calendar year twenty-five after people have had a chance. I bet you those numbers are going to go up pretty well. And I just wanted to mention while we're here that our staff is doing a really good job of communicating with your new Public Services Director, Matt, I would attempt to say his last name, but as someone whose last name often gets butchered, I won't try because I'm sure I would get it wrong. But the great job communicating, especially when we have to have closures and things due to weather-related events, is really good to work with. So we appreciate that. Our landfill capacity, just want to touch on this. So if you look at this here at the very top of that picture, that's County Home Road to the north. Off to the east is where we have our fencing, the berm, and then Highway thirteen. Off to the west is some buffer ground that we have in farmland, and then to the south below there is our southern boundary. So this is where we are currently landfilling. So phases one through five A, that's where the garbage is coming in. This fall, we're going to start design plans on the final phase of the landfill. We call that Phase Five B. That's what's going to be constructed. And this is the last section of the landfill that we have space with left to landfill. So like I said, design work will start this fall. Construction will be in two thousand and twenty-seven, and then that'll be it. We project to be full before two thousand and forty-four. As you know, per our settlement agreement with the city of Marion, all operations will cease out of County Home Road during thirty of two thousand and forty-four. Will likely be full before then if garbage continue to come in at the same rates. So right now, that's projected to be in two thousand and thirty-seven, could get pushed out to two thousand and thirty-eight depending on different factors. But if that is the case, then the agency will operate as a transfer station. So the garbage will still come there, and it'll just get shipped out to a location that has space, be it another landfill in Iowa if they want it, or perhaps a private landfill in Illinois. But that's how we'll handle the garbage once we get full at this location. Recycling services, how do we avoid filling up? People taking advantage of their recycling diversion opportunities. So using the curbside services that we have here in Marion, and then the folks that live out in the county that don't have those, they can bring it into us for your paper, plastic, cardboard, glass, things like that. Appliances, those pricing are staying the same. People can drop off appliances for ten dollars per unit. Scrap metal, no charge to drop that off. Tires are staying the same. So many tires out there. It's going to be four dollars per tire, five if it's still on the rim. And then batteries and medical sharps, those are still no charge to drop off. Batteries being the big issue that cause fires all the time. We have literally one to two fires a week from lithium batteries that people throw in the garbage. So we're hoping to everyone, a lot of people now can't make the distinction because alkaline batteries look like lithium batteries. And so to make it easier for folks, we're taking all batteries for no charge inside our Resource Recovery Building. So if you're not sure what it is, just bring it to us. We'll take it for free and keep them out of the curbside containers, of course. TVs and monitor recycling staying the same, fifteen dollars per unit. And then household hazardous materials, this is for Lynn County residents. They can bring those out to us anytime we're open. So Monday through Friday, seven to four. Paints, chemicals, stain cleaners, you know, when spring cleaning rolls around, people are in, under the cupboards and the garage, things like that. If you're not sure what it is, bring it to us, and we'll take it. Diversion and partnerships to keep materials out of the landfill. We've added some new services and programs. Books, hardcover and softcover books are being recycled, old CDs, VHS tapes, DVDs, even cassette tapes. They're still out there. People are bringing those in all the time. Textiles recycling, we're working with St. Vincent de Paul, so we're keeping that material out of the landfill as well. And the newest ones since I've been here last year is mattress recycling. You bring a mattress out to the landfill, it's going to cost you twenty dollars. And the reason for that is they're one of the worst things to have in the landfill. You know, our compacters weigh tens of thousands of pounds. They go over top of that, those mattresses just start to pop back up. And when you get the big loads from like Levita and places like that who bring in forty at a time, it's really difficult to handle. So we partnered with Willis Dade. They're taking them for ten dollars per mattress. We're helping subsidize the program. We're giving them another ten dollars to process it. But we want to keep those. It's worth us to do that, to keep it out of the landfill. And it's been a great program so far. This is a look inside their warehouse over on First Avenue in Cedar Rapids. They're keep, they're getting those materials. They're taking them apart. It's providing jobs for their homeless clients. So they have six people working in there full-time, demanufacturing it, pulling out the metal, pulling out the foam, bailing it. They have end markets for it. And this is the only mattress recycling operation right now in the state of Iowa. So it's grown, it's been growing by leaps and bounds. Started off as a pilot project. It's now full-time. We hope to see it continue to grow, but that one's been working really well. And one that I don't have room on there for is Central Furniture Rescue. We're working with them, diverting material. Most of the time when it comes to us, it's going to get landfilled. Our staff, we have them out there by our residential dumpsters. They look at loads, and if somebody comes in and they've got a bunch of garbage, but they have one nice couch that they just don't want anymore, we're pulling that to the side and then giving that to Central Furniture Rescue, keep that material out of the landfill, and then it's going to someone who needs that for their home. And then for our other facility in Cedar Rapids, Mount Trashmore will reopen this spring. We're going to be doing the Mount Trashmore Challenge again, which is going up and down Mount Trashmore a hundred and forty times, which is the equivalent of scaling Mount Everest. And it's a great view, so I always encourage folks to come check that out. And then our compost operation, you know, this people in Marion don't really need it because we have one here. But we do give compost away for no charge to Lynn County residents, and they can take as much as they want, as long as we have a supply. We do run out of supply quite often now, though. It's pretty popular. So actually, I just want to wrap up by saying, you know, hey, we're still here to serve Marion and Lynn County, you know, even as we progress towards the future and figuring out what's going to be going on. And as far as engagement for future site planning, we're going to keep in contact with you. And I realize I come here, you know, once or twice a year, give you these updates, throw a lot of numbers at you and things like that. But if you guys ever want more engagement, just let us know. We're ready to provide the information. You know, if you want to go more deep dive on some of these issues, please, I can come talk to you anytime. If you have groups that you're affiliated with, Rotary, Lions Club, let us know. We want to get out and talk about that so people are aware of their recycling diversion opportunities. So I know you've got a big agenda today with the Call of the Sac talk coming up. I'm curious to see how that plays out, work for. But yeah, so thank you for your time and appreciate it. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions? Go ahead.
Joe, thanks for, you know, coming forward a couple of times a year and, you know, giving us updates. One of the things that I've always had a curiosity about is recycling. And I was kind of surprised at the cost per ton that has to be paid in order to have it secondarily processed. Once it's processed, and I think you said Republic's doing that work, does that, does that create then, I guess, valuable streams of material that then are subsequently put back into the products, a live product stream? Or is it separated, and does some amount of that ultimately end up being landfilled elsewhere? What I'm trying to understand is the efficacy of the total recycle waste stream.
So, yes. It depends on it. Like I said, recycling completely market-driven. So like, you know, if I was here six years ago, I'd have been saying to you, you know, hey, paper right now, there's no market for it. Paper was sitting all over the United States and just, you know, there were some places where it would get rained on, it would have to get landfilled because they couldn't find anyone to take it. Then COVID hit, and the market for paper and cardboard skyrocketed again. Biggest issue that we deal with right now is plastics. So when you guys are recycling paper curbside, it's getting processed into new paper materials. Aluminum cans can be recycled indefinitely. Aluminum steel tin cans are always getting recycled. Plastics, plastics ones and twos are getting recycled. So when it goes to Republic and they separate it out, they get their bales, they get their plastic number ones, they bail that material, they can sell that because there's markets here domestically in the United States. Classic number twos, there are markets in the United States. It's plastics three through sevens, nobody wants them. They're garbage. So they, those are, those are recyclables that are end up getting landfilled again. So the other materials, they are, they are, they're getting recycled, like all the other things we talked about, the scrap metal, things that we have. But plastics, three through sevens, right now, do not get recycled because there's not a market for it. Now, Republic is one of the biggest garbage companies in the United States. They have a polymer plant that's in Las Vegas, and so they're getting, they're, they're having a market there for it. It doesn't make sense to ship three through sevens in Iowa all the way to Las Vegas. They're building a second polymer plant in Indianapolis. That might be close enough that plastics from the Midwest, all of them here, could get shipped over there. So there could potentially be one in the future, and that's one of those things where we've trained people for so long now to recycle, recycle, recycle. It's tough to make that transition of, hey, just put ones and twos in it. And that's why we've continued to take it, but we're thinking of making the switch of just saying, hey, we only want ones and twos, throw, throw away the rest. But if that market comes back, then it's three training folks again.
Well, I guess it's just, what I worry about is, is that a lot that could be recycled just ends up going into the regular garbage and therefore, over time, reduces the ultimate capacity that's available to us. So I don't know. It's, well, thanks for giving that context. I've got to think about that a little bit more.
Yes, I got to pass the meeting back to the mayor first.
Yeah, I think the whole thing about the recycling, especially the plastics, I mean, that's a challenge in our household, and there's only two of us. So I think I'm getting more on board with it's only ones and twos. And so it's so easy to continue to throw some of those plastics you used to put into the recycling container that you've always done in the past, that look good, you think ought to be good, and we can't distinguish whether that's good or not. So you just, the only way to do it is the one and two. So, you know, that's ongoing education to make sure everybody understands that because we're so used to putting all the plastics in there, make sure it's clean, but putting them all in there, and now you got all of a sudden backtrack to one and two, and that's a whole lot less percentage. But you feel kind of guilty taking some of those other ones you used to recycle, and now you're throwing those in the garbage. So you feel a little guilty doing that, but trying to follow at least the direction that you guys have established. So I understand the market-driven aspect. It's, it's, hopefully it comes back.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I have a question too. Going back to the current two thousand and forty-four plan as it is now, have you guys, you mentioned other sites in Iowa and potentially Illinois. Have you guys been having specific conversations with potential sites already at this point?
So how it works is, so we're part of EC Cog. So like when we have garbage, something that we can't handle, it first goes to the people who are also in EC Cog. So Iowa City landfill, Benton County, Tama County, Jones County, and Iowa County. And if they decline it, then it can go out. So for example, like we don't, there's certain asbestos that we don't take. It goes to Blackcock County because none of the other landfills in EC Cog would take that. So we're generating anywhere from a hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred thousand tons of garbage come to those solid waste agency each year generated in Lynn County. None of the other landfills in our area can handle that amount. So when it comes time, when we go to transfer it, we'll put out, we'll go out for bid and say, okay, does anybody want this? None of them will want it because they can't handle it. The other landfills in Iowa that potentially could, Des Moines, Waterloo, Dubuque, they could say that they want that. They might not. And then if not, then we'll have to go to the privates in Illinois.
Are you having to balance, are certain other sites also looking at future capacity issues based off where they are like now that we have to kind of balance?
Every landfill in Iowa is. There hasn't been a new landfill cited in Iowa in more than thirty years. Everyone just keeps expanding at their current location. We're just the first major one, basically the first one and the major, biggest one that has gotten to that point where we're in a really tight deadline. Like Iowa City has, I think, fifty to seventy-five years of airspace left. Dubuque has like three hundred years of airspace left. So it's really all over the map, but we're the one that's closest.
Thank you.
What is your, what is your breakdown percentage-wise, commercial versus residential?
In FY twenty-four, we were seventy-three percent commercial, twenty-seven percent MSW. So that twenty-seven percent is City of Marion, City of Cedar Rapids, and all of our smaller communities.
Residential, that's.
Municipal solid waste, yep.
So seventy?
Seventy-three to twenty-seven.
Seventy-three, twenty-seven. All right. Thanks.
Joe, I've got another question, different topic. You mentioned that the at-capacity date, that's what year, twenty thirty-six?
Twenty thirty-seven or in that range.
Okay, and it's going to wiggle around a little bit relative. Okay. So I guess my question is, and I'm thinking from a, from a long-term project, what do you see in between now and let's just say over the next five years, the level of activity to plan what the alternative is with the eventual, eventual at-capacity date of twenty thirty-six or seven? And I'll just be completely transparent. I'm really, I'm really thinking all of that decision cycle needs to be completed relatively soon. And by soon, I mean within a few number of years. We can't, we can't find ourselves distracted and having to have compressed timeframe, which then to make perhaps a suboptimum decision. So I guess from a project management standpoint, what are your thoughts about moving fast, doing the due diligence, get through that process earlier so that then we can evaluate, have fair time to evaluate all the options that may be materializing?
And we've been going through that process. We call it Forward Two Thousand and Forty-four for getting to two thousand and forty-four and planning for beyond that. And so that's where we've gone through. And like I mentioned to you guys last year, and again, this is where I throw a lot at you. And, you know, we think about it every day, and it's just one day for you guys to think about this. But there's, we've looked at the alternative technologies. And again, for the amount of garbage that we generate, and two hundred thousand tons is a lot of garbage. It sounds like that. But in the grand scheme of things, it's not a whole lot. And so when you look at things like incinerators or mixed waste processing, or looking at anaerobic digestion, things like that, they're really good. They're viable options. They're just really, really expensive. Like a state-of-the-art generator, when we looked at it three years ago, was over a billion dollars to build one. And then we have to import garbage in to make it run and be cost-effective. And so that's why, so long-term transfer stations is probably most likely for Lynn County, since our board has said there's not going to be a new landfill cited here. There's just no parcels of land left where you could build what we have out on County Home Road someplace else. So transfer is most likely option. And you're right, Grant, it takes almost as long to cite a transfer station through the citing process as it does to cite a compost operation or a landfill. So we'll be looking at that. So our site two, County Home Road, is permitted to operate as a transfer station. So again, when we do get full, we can transition right to that, and there'll be a process as we're getting closer that we know that we just, you know, turn the key and be able to go with that. But though, in the future, you know, we've talked about in the past that there'll be a transfer station south to meet the needs of Cedar Rapids and the industry there, and a transfer station north to meet the needs of Marion, Center Point, Central City, and everyone as well. Because the process is underway, and it's ongoing.
Thanks. Did you have any questions? All right, thanks.
All right, good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, I will officially pass it back to the mayor.
All right. Apologize for walking in late. I was at the library talking to a group about my favorite subject. Okay, next item is a presentation from Uptown Marion. May I have Lacy Schrader?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before we dive into this year's report, I just wanted to tell you yet again, thank you for your ongoing partnership and support of Uptown. I appreciate the opportunity to work alongside all of you, and I look forward to the next many, many years together. And over the past six months that I have been here, I've seen firsthand the impact that our partnership has had on this community, and I want to continue to build on that momentum. Before we get into look into two thousand and twenty-four from Uptown, let's talk about the Main Street Iowa program and give you an overview, because I think there's some really exciting statistics in here. Across the state of Iowa, there are fifty communities that are designated Main Streets. Main Street programs have had a powerful economic and community impact across Iowa with nearly two-point-eight billion dollars invested in Main Street buildings. These efforts have supported over fifty-five-hundred new and expanding businesses and created nearly seventeen thousand jobs. Those are not small numbers in our state. But the impact goes just, goes beyond those numbers. These districts serve as the economic hubs of the regions, proving that downtown revitalization works. They bring a diverse mix of businesses and residents, ensuring economic resilience even in challenging times. Housing is another critical piece of this puzzle. Did you know that across the United States, that ninety-three percent of upper-story housing is currently vacant? That is not a problem that we, that we have currently in Uptown, and I think that speaks to the success of the revitalization of this area. Restoring residential spaces in our Main Street districts have helped breathe new life into downtowns and created vibrant communities where people are connected. Ultimately, Main Streets are more than a business hub. They represent the identity and legacies of our cities. We are very merry and proud here. We are very aware of our history, and we constantly talk about it. And I love when I'm sitting and people are like, oh, do you remember what used to be there? And they know the history. They know who's owned the buildings and the legacy behind those spaces. Let's talk about a real quick overview of the Marion District. For those of you who aren't familiar, this is our current Uptown District map. These are the coordinates that were designated after a review in two thousand and eighteen. Alongside Main Street Iowa, the board felt that the district needed to expand because there was need based on commercial growth to the south, and that the businesses that were there needed support and wanted to participate in the Main Street program. The first area of redevelopment was planned with a restaurant that you are familiar with, West End, and the micro businesses that are there, an existing bakery that had been active in Uptown but was outside the district. The second area rounds about, rounds out the boundaries along Ninth Avenue, bringing businesses in like Edward Jones and even the food pantry. The third area includes the redevelopment of the Dunkin' Donuts site, which does serve as a useful landmark when trying to tell people where the West End of our district lies. After reviewing those potential, after reviewing any potential removals, it was felt that we wanted to include all the spaces to the north because the Granger House is so historic, and we wanted to include it in the historic district. It is an important cultural asset. Looking at our visitor insights from using Placer AI, which is a geo-fencing service that we contract with our partners here in Marion, you can see that Uptown Marion isn't just loved by the locals, that it is becoming a regional destination. In the past year, we captured over one-point-five million visits, which in, which ends up being around three hundred and twelve thousand individual visitors. That information is tracked by the cell phone that is in your bag or your pocket. So there are probably a decent chunk of individuals that we did not capture who don't maybe carry their cell phone, forgot it at home, or are too young to carry one or choose not to carry one. We also have some information of traffic by zip code. As you can see, the, the blue marks in the map are just the amount of, sorry, excuse me, of the surrounding area and the different shades of blue is the density of visitors. But we also are drawing from a regional perspective, all the way from Kansas City to St. Louis, Des Moines, Chicago, Minneapolis. On average, people when they're visiting Uptown, they are here for ninety-seven minutes, which means that they're not just stopping in one space. They're eating, they're having a drink, they're shopping, they're going to the hair salon. They're visiting our library. Our library draws in a ton of visitors from the area. Uptown is drawing people in, and once they're here, they are staying. These are a few of our two thousand and twenty-four wins. I came on a little over halfway through the year. So a lot of these, I want to commend my predecessor, Brooke Proudy, for her hard work and dedication for many, many years. And I am truly grateful that she is with Main Street Iowa, and she and I collaborate frequently, and she's been a wonderful help getting my feet under me. In two thousand and twenty-four, Marion. And twenty-twenty-four Marion, Uptown Marion truly embraced growth and collaboration. From the beginning of the year, we focused on enhancing the district, bringing in new businesses and strengthening our community ties. It was a year of building on momentum that would, on our momentum, hosting over thirty events alongside our community partners. We continue to earn recognition with our projects and initiatives catching the attention of Main Street, Main Street America and beyond. Along the way, we have celebrated the success of businesses like Goldfinch Tap and Eatery, whose journey from our local state, local competition to our state competition for Open for Business, becoming a semifinalist and second runner, or runner-up, receiving a very competitive grant. It's just the recognition that shows the impact of the work that we are doing here. It's been a year of progress and we're excited to continue to reach higher. As we look ahead to twenty-twenty-five and beyond, we have three key strategies that will be driving our work forward. First is place-making, it remains that the heart of our efforts. When we were developing our strategies with Main Street America and Main Street Iowa, one thing they continued to encourage me to do is not try to reinvent something, come up with a new concept, but what, kind of hone in on what we were actually doing and place-making really is what has been happening here. It's activating those spaces in Uptown and not just building a district. We're creating a vibrant and interconnected community where people want to be. This approach is rooted in our Main Street revitalization. We'll continue to boost economic growth and foster engagement, making Uptown a place that people, that draws people in and keeps them coming back. Our next strategy is business curation. This is focusing on attracting and nurturing a diverse mix of businesses that align with the needs and values of our community. Now you may wonder how you can do something like that when you're not the leasing agent. Well, that's where those, those relationships become really important. So connecting with those leasing agents of those vacant spaces, having that ongoing dialogue with the, with the building owners, helping them understand, you know, what is the best fit in that space? While we can't control who signs those leases, we hope to foster those relationships where there's good understanding. Our final strategy is one that comes to us from our parent program, Main Street Iowa, and that is building a strong and sustainable and inclusive organization. That means that we need to have resilience and be an inclusive nonprofit and, and lead our revitalization efforts. We continue to tell the story of our impact, supporting fundraising, leadership development and deepening community engagement. These strategies will, will guide our work forward as we grow and evolve. This slide showcases the dedicated individuals who serve in leadership and advisory roles within Uptown. As a staff of one, our organization truly does rely on its support and commitment from its volunteers to drive our work plans and make our initiatives a reality. Each of these individuals brings an expertise, passion and shared commitment to the success of our district. They are the driving force behind our progress and thanks to, thanks to their hard work and collaboration that we continue to thrive. We are deeply grateful for their ongoing support and leadership. I think there are a few familiar faces on that screen. And thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to present myself and tell you about our work plans. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to take them.
I have one. Go ahead. First, Lacy, I just want to say thank you and appreciate all the work that you've been doing already in the first six months on the role and getting to know you through the leadership class has been excellent. I also just want to comment that I, you were bringing up the point about the importance of place-making and finding the right spots for those businesses and the importance of that relationship, those relationship-building skills and I'd, I'd second that. I think that's a really important piece of what, what you guys do up there and making sure that we find the right spot, the appropriate spots for the right businesses. And, and I'd like, I'd love to continue seeing that moving forward. But my question for you is just kind of wondering, since you've been on the job for six months, kind of what's, what's been your, your biggest takeaway so far on the job and have there been any surprises?
I think the surprise was, and this is gonna sound like a joke, but it's not, that garbage and parking would consume my work life. It's an ongoing conversation, it's a work in progress and just understanding the community needs has been really important. And the continued conversation, conversation is important, especially with the each shop opening. I think we're all feeling that pinch of helping people understand where, you know, where and when you can park where and, you know, helping the business owners communicate that has been, like, Brooke said it and I was like, okay. But I didn't realize that it would consume a lot of what I do, but it's also very important. We don't want to have people shy away from coming and visit or driving up and going, oh, there's nowhere to park and leaving when there are ample spaces, they just might need to walk a block or two. And what was your second part of the question?
Well, it might be the same.
It might be.
Biggest takeaway, it might be the same thing.
I think the next biggest takeaway is, I don't even remember who it was, but I'm an individual that, I'm not impulsive, but like I, like if something needs to get done, I'm gonna do it right away, but just to take a beat and think and process and listen to the people who have been in this community for a long time. I don't, I'm not a Marion resident, I don't live here, I don't, hadn't worked here prior. So understanding like the unique Marion culture has been really important. So pausing and listening has been a really important takeaway professionally.
Yeah, I agree, that was been my biggest takeaway in this role too, is pump the brake a little bit and be okay with that, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? I, I have a question, like, so if, if a business is struggling, what, what is the process or the, what, how do you step in to, like to even know about that? What do you do to help them?
Yeah.
What do you do to, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, you can't, you know, if they're not, you can't do everything to save a business, I'm just saying, what are, how do you support them so that they are, so we're giving them the best chance possible? Like, first of all, how would you find out about it? Are you that connected with the business owners that you would know? And what, what, how do you react to that?
Sure, um, for the most part, I say I'm pretty in tune with how the businesses are doing. I do a lot of like on-the-street time, going into each business, trying to connect with those business owners. And a lot of times, I kind of feel like a therapist, like I walk in and they, they just tell me all the things that are going wrong. So like I have a good, good sense, there are some business owners who are not interested in seeing me or hearing from me, they, I feel like they've got it. And we give them that space, but I still try to check in. We do have what's called a BRE process, so Business Retention and Expansion Process, where I'll give you an example, one of our business owners reached out and said, you know, I'm not sure I'm gonna make it through the month of January. And I said, oh, okay, let me pop in and see what's, you know, what's happening. My run's really expensive, I'm not getting a lot of foot traffic. It's, it's tricky, so we sat down and we talked about, you know, what are different ways you can market yourself? Just kind of offering that type of advice, looking at their business plans. It is like a formal survey that they fill out that kind of gives us an idea of their target market, their, the traffic that they're seeing, how much they're spending on advertising, how often they're amending their business plan. Are they working with resources like New Boco or Scott out at Kirkwood? And then plugging them in that way and then doing some frequent checks, because we obviously don't want to see anybody close their doors. We have seen some closures very recently and in those cases, at the end of the day, like, you have to be the individual in your business that's working on your business. And we give them that advice frequently, you can't work on your business if you're always just like in the kitchen or, you know, stocking your own shelves. I think historically, those businesses owner, business owners know that Uptown is there to support them, the chamber is there to support them, so they are comfortable reaching out.
Thank you. And I would second what Gage said. I, I think it's critical that we're proactive in sort of identifying, and I know I've shared that with you personally, so, but I'll just repeat it, that we're identifying, like, you know, what is ideal in an empty spot and, and actually proactively go out and finding that business. To, to have a good mix of businesses that, that complement each other and all that. And I know that you're doing that, I just, just want to stress that, I think it's, it's really important because it's, we don't have endless spaces and opportunities for people that want to open businesses and, and, you know, you get too much of, of one type of business or, or it takes away opportunities for other businesses that could really thrive and, and, and be a compliment to everything that you're doing there. So, but, good job. You've, you've overcome the learning curve real quickly and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a update on the Aquatic Center project in Willowood Park.
Good evening. I'm here presenting just an update for the Aquatic Center in Willowood Park. Here before you is the list of committee members that were appointed for the steering committee. We have fifteen members, all representatives of the community. We also have representatives from city council and park board. For this first meeting, we, we hosted on February twelfth. Our intentions was to be in person, however, Mother Nature had other plans. We were able to adapt and adjust and be able to host it virtually. From this meeting, we invited the mayor and also the chamber there to help share the importance of the project, the appreciation for their involvement, but also to talk a little bit about Imagine Next and where this was as being a core four item. A lot of this was review for the committee, we reviewed the aquatic feasibility study, laying the foundation. We also talked about the referendum vote coming on November fourth. And then also shared with them the open house that we hosted and the survey results from the Willowood Park project, along with the budget and next steps. With the Willowood Park items, things that we did want to affirm in, in hearing Jensen, last time we did this update to affirm some of the items. With the referendum bond of votes, if it passes, we do expect for the Willowood Pool to operate till we have a new facility open. And it is the intentions to redevelop the property into a park. If it fails, Marion, we will reevaluate the aquatic needs and then we'll also determine a plan for closing the existing pool. When we come back in March, we'll have some decommissioning steps that we'll present to help show what that potential timeline could look like and, and show some of those potential obligations to just keep the facility running. And we'll have our consultant help tell that story. Some of the next steps that we'll have here, we're gonna have, the really, the first steps have, have been really addressing the Willowood neighborhood and in that park development. In March, we're gonna be coming forward with an updated concept plan. We'll be presenting to the steering committee along with the neighborhood, we'll also share it with city council. And we'll be doing those on the March timeline. And then in late March, we'll be, we'll continue to educate and push those marketing plans to talk about Willowood Park and what that looks like. Some of the additional considerations, so we did share the survey results with council, you'll be able to find that within a shared folder. And some of the, last time we did an update, we shared some of the common themes that came from that meeting, but some, there were some questions in there that we wanted to address publicly. One of the question was, a lot of questions, and this came from the committee meeting, about emission prices, expenses, revenues. And so one thing we wanted just to share that we will have an updated business plan that will come around April, May, as we're starting to get schematic designs completed. And that will be a business plan for the whole Aquatic Center. Other items that we heard, trail extension to Willowood. We wanted to very clarify that was not gonna be part of the project, however, we want to make sure we consider those thoughts when we're doing park planning. Pickleball is something that's been very common in surveys and it's not just with this, the Willowood surveys, but in other neighborhood parks. We do want to consider pickleball for the Aquatic Center property. And so want to make sure that we had that into consideration. And then dog park and pump track considerations were something that was brought up for Willowood, but something from a review are gonna be considered for other properties that we'll look at for other properties. If you're curious on what a pump track is, that's a, kind of think about dirt bike. It can be made asphalt, earth, concrete, but it's essentially just a mountain bike track is, is what for a pump track. As we're looking at the timeline, we'll be coming again, we'll have steering committee update. We provided that steering committee update, we'll be coming back in March to, to the council. Also hosting an open house and committee meeting in March. Wanted to point out the CMAR, the Construction Manager at Risk approval in April. In conjunction with this, we are working on sending up reviews and interviews and we are on schedule for that construction, construction manager at risk in April. With that, I'll answer any questions?
Steve?
Yeah, Seth, a question about the pickleball. That's something obviously we hear all the time from a number of different people, a number of different sources. So you've got your, your statement up there that the pickleball consideration will be at the Aquatic Center. Is that firm or is there still consideration to put that at Willowood? Since you're gonna have plenty of space there at Willowood and to give the, another reason to go there. So is that firm at Aquatic Center or is it still one or the other?
It is very firm at the Aquatic Center and the reason why is when we talk about active spaces, the Aquatic Center is gonna have a lot of noise come along with it. And there's plenty of separation between residential housing, where you're not gonna have that noise pollution that you typically get with pickleball, which is not so much noisy, it's more just persistent clacking that goes on. And there's probably, there's a lot better opportunities to be able to do more pickleball courts. Typically, we've, when they're coming forward, they're not just asking for one or two, they're asking for four to six courts.
Oh, I'd say a dozen.
A dozen, yeah.
I mean, I'm serious.
Yeah, it is.
If you look at the park over at Jones Park, I've seen that, I drove over there just to see it. I mean, it doesn't take much more to put twelve in versus six, that's very compact.
Yes.
It's there, that's a good-looking park over there. Obviously, it's the only thing it's being used for, for all the land they've got. So, so in other words, what I'm understanding is, is it more of a noise consideration?
Yes.
Because of the resident, residential houses all the way around it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Seth, a couple of years ago, I think you and I and Carleen met at Willowood and I was able to take some pictures of the pool completely empty. And I was, I was a little shocked relative to the amount of cracking that exists. I'm thinking about the situation of if we, by virtue of outcome on the referendum, have to operate the existing pool longer. I, I think it's important for us to be transparent about the risks that are associated with running that facility, you know, past what might be its normal life. And so I guess I'm, I'd be interested in seeing somewhat of a, of a risk, risk ma, matrix, if you would, about these are the things that will have to be addressed in order to maintain the operability of our existing pool long-term. I don't, I don't know where that fits into our considerations, I recognize our primary effort has to be done preparing. You all and the, the advisory committee need to put, put their work on getting ready for the, the referendum. But I'm also interested in that what if we've got to operate for long-term? So at some point, I think it'd be useful just for our understanding what that might look like.
Yes, and, and we currently have our consultants working on those considerations, both from a safety and financial considerations on how long the pool will have till its end of life.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Sarah.
So I'm just wanna clarify for anybody listening, and you probably brought this up, but as we go through this, that there's a group that met last week, but that's specifically on design. And there will be a separate group that it's, the chamber is responsible for, that will be dealing with whether or not, dealing with the bond vote. And that's a separate fundraising group and whatever that will be dealing with that side of it. So there's multiple entities working on this.
It's not.
Yes.
It's not, the bond is not, the city's not running the bond, the chamber is, even though it's a city.
So just to clarify, the steering committee meeting was on the twelfth. The chambers is taking on being a champion, they're, they're, they have a separate group that's not affiliated with the city and they'll be operating that function, so.
And, and again, if this doesn't pass, the potential could be with Willowood that that cannot continue, like that is not necessarily a viable operating pool. We, we're, we're keeping this tape together, so, right? I mean, look at the options that could happen, the option, there could be an option also that there is not. a pool option in this community.
We'll lay, we'll lay those, what those implic- financial and safety implications would be to continue to invest in the property, but it would be looking at, you know, decommissioning or the closing of the pool at, at a certain time. It could be following the bond vote, could be five years. Those are things that we'll bring forward to council to help decide those factors.
Okay. And Steve, just come circling back because there's a, there is a park group that is meeting that's talking about a new par- two new parks and repurposing one of the existing parks. And we brought up the, the community members that have been involved in that and the open houses pickleball was brought up at those locations and gauge also serves on that. And we hear about it. So we, we pushed hard on it. And that's where we learned again about the, the noise piece. And I'm like, well, what about the basketball hoops? Because, I mean, I've got one in my yard and I know I've become very accustomed to bouncing balls, but and you actually went through the difference in noise volumes on the sound of the pickleball versus even basketballs and what's happening or the soccer. Because we, we wondered about that, that same thing. So I think that's the community could hear. That's why we're not putting them in certain spots because of the neighbors that are adjoining to it.
Anyone else? I think Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Kim with the hotel market feasibility study.
Good evening again. I, tonight I just want to provide you just an update. As you know, we about a month or a month and a half or so ago, council approved moving forward with a hotel feasibility study. What does that look like? Do we need additional hotels or not? We worked with, we worked with Jessica Dunker, who helped us work through that process. She visited and held interviews with about 20 different members of our business community, along with having 17 other members of our business community that completed a survey. Simply because we couldn't get them, we couldn't get them to fit into the schedule or they were out for the out for those two days that she was here. So based on that information, also talking with the city, the chamber and uptown and the other event holders that she has determined that we, we will go into phase two, which will then phase two is going to be looking at the appropriate locations for another hotel and also putting those performers together. So that way, when we engage in the future, when we engage, we've got this dat- these data points for people, hotelers to take a look at. We, in the report, she will be specific to the uptown area, but in that, in that final phase two product, she will provide those locations that add to and present itself into the uptown area. So it'll be interesting to see. She'll have that report done in the next week or so as to what that will look like. Also, something to keep in mind is hotelers that it takes time. So this is engaging with a hoteler and moving forward with such a project could take up to two years for it to be completed. So it's not something that will happen necessarily be built, you know, start breaking ground in the spring. It takes time to get that put together and talk with those individuals. And then once we get that report, then we'll come back and share, share that information as well.
Questions, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess the one question I would have is, and this might be kind of a silly technical question, but does, does that study then factor in like the hotel that just recently opened when they wouldn't necessarily know?
Correct.
How much clientele they have yet and what the use is over there? Or how do they kind of like factor that in?
Yes, they take a look at it. There's, the consultant has several years of background in doing these types of studies. So they look at as they're looking at all of the hotels that we currently have, they also look at our adjacent communities, hotels, the aging of the hotels. Even in our communities, you know, the age of the hotels. What, what is their flag? They will look at the flags as well and see based on the flags, it's about viability. There's a lot of different things that she takes a look at that then, along with the information that we receive from doing interviews and surveys, then show that demand and what the need is.
Cool. Thanks. I was just curious. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Kim, is the phase one work product in a form that could be shared with council? So we can kind of see the consideration that went in to try to determine the market demand.
Yeah, she'll give us a full, once phase two is done, then she'll put all of that together for us.
Right. Okay, so just relax, Grant. All will be revealed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Next item is the upcoming agenda review. First item that's marked for discussion is on page four, A9. Anything prior to A9? Leanne's ready with A9.
A9 is regarding setting a public hearing for a proposed development agreement with Hoth Flats LLC. Recall that we had previously already done an urban revitalization area for this, and then we had done an urban renewal plan amendment. So we're just following up with that final step. Final step of creating the development agreement with Hoth Flats. This is a 24 housing units. Recall, they did receive a community development block grant disaster relief from the state. And then they are, we are proposing a tax increment finance incentive that's 10 years, 75% rebate with a maximum of $450,000. Really just mark this one for discussion to see if council had any questions.
Any more questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Leanne, maybe you don't have this information, but what's, what's the general anticipated timeframe this project would start up on?
I do not have this start up on. However, the development agreement does say that they would have completion by June 30, 2026.
Oh, okay.
That's pretty quick.
Yeah, it sounds like it's got to start.
Okay, anything else for Leanne? All right, she's got the next one, A10.
This is a follow up from our budget work session. Our next step is to set a public hearing for the March 27th concerning the proposed property tax rate. At the budget work session, we talked about the transit levy and how we had received a last minute communication from Horizons regarding the bus service. So the only change that you're going to see in a levy here is a slight increase on transit. It's less than 0.001, I believe it was. So we're looking at 1489684. Just really quickly wanted to show for council and for the public that levy impact. So on a property owner of a $200,000 property, you're looking at an increase in property tax of $41. Looking at multi-residential and commercial, multi-residential property at 850,000 in value will see an increase of $175 for the year. And a commercial property valued at a million would see an increase of $103. This is just what we've show for consistency to just kind of see if you were to keep the same taxable value from year to year, what would have needed to have occurred with your property valuation? This year, that would have meant that you would needed to have decreased your property value by 2.3% for taxable valuation. What would my growth need to be in order to pay the exact same tax bill to the city? Your, your property value would have needed to have decreased by 2.81%. And then I just wanted to point out, this is the hearing notice that gets published in the paper and posted on our web pages. This is kind of confusing for the property owner. That very first column is showing what we certified in property tax for fiscal year 24, 25. That second column is if we, if we taxed the same property tax dollars, what would that levy rate be? So you can see it would go from 1480314 to $14.30, 36 cents. And then that far right column is what we actually are proposing for our tax, which is that 1489, almost 1490. The other thing I wanted to point out, one of the changes that the state made this past year well-meaning change was the fact that last year, when these came out, property values don't stay the same every other year. So at a, on a year where people were seeing close to a 20% increase in value, they were showing that property value staying at 100,000. So you can see on this year's rendition, they're showing property, residential property values increasing 10%. I personally wish they would have waited another year because this is the year when it's not a reassessment year. So their property values don't change unless they did a building permit or changed something on their property. So if you get questions on residents, you might want to point that out. Aside from that, I just want to see if there was any questions. Because from an approval process standpoint, this is where we're at. We have that deadline, March 5th, which is why I'm, I'm talking to you today. Then on March 15th, that county will send out that property tax mailing. On March 27th, we'll have our hearing on the property tax amount, and then we'll proceed with what we're used to, which is the normal property, the normal public hearing and adoption.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Leanne, can we back up one slide? Tell me if I'm wrong, but for the line items, city regular tax rate, about two thirds of the way down or so. That's the important line, isn't it? Isn't that the, the important information?
Correct.
You know, I guess.
Total rate. It's kind of buried in the middle, isn't it?
Yeah, I, all of this, all of the data representation at the very bottom of this form. I, it, it made my head hurt a little bit. I don't know why it was important, but so regular, city regular tax rate is really the essence of what this form's trying to report.
Yep, the tax rate. And then at the bottom, they're trying to show what that impact will be. But like I said, because this year they're increasing the value of the property, that's not actually true for most of us. Most of us are going to see the same value because it's not a reassessment year. So they're gonna, I mean, if I were a resident looking at this, my eyes would probably go to the bottom because it's trying to show you current year certified with $100,000 value, you're paying 686. We're assuming your value jumps to 110,000, you're paying 777, and then they're going to look at that percentage change of 13.27% and go you're increasing my taxes 13.27% and you're going to go, that's not factually correct. And that's why I wanted to make sure I pointed that out.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else, Leanne? Okay, 11 and 12 are not marked. Any questions on those? B1, chief?
Yeah, good evening, council. This is for the EMS study agreement with Public Consulting Group is being amended to lengthen the timeline of completion through April. The initial agreement is due to be completed in February. Our, the final report's not complete yet. Hence the recommended amendment to lengthen to April. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Nice to have you here.
Thanks, man.
Okay. Next item that's marked is on page six, E1. Anything prior to E1? Go ahead.
I have a question on D4.
Yes.
Mike, is this an update? Is this a, I'm assuming it's with you. It's on the mailbox damage policy and claim form. Is this an update to something we had or what changed?
So when we updated our ordinance and our policy, we purposely left this part out so that we can do a comparable to our other comparable cities and just freshened it up. So we did have a policy before and this just streamlined it, made it more clear.
Okay, anything else prior to E1 on page six? All right, E1, Nicole?
Good afternoon, mayor and city council. So we've got applicant looking to wrap up all the development along Highway 151 there with lot five. It is for a two unit multi-tenant commercial structure. This is for the final site development plan. It is on one and a half acres outlined in red there, again, just north of Highway 151, east of Highway 13. The property is zoned planned unit development and is included within the 13151 design guidelines. As far as reviewing final site development plans within this area, we reviewed against the approved preliminary site development plan, which was included within those design guidelines. That's one reason why we're not seeing a preliminary site development plan for this specific project and only the final one. Because during staff's review, we didn't feel that they were required to go back through that process with a revised preliminary site development plan. I'll kind of walk through the overall site as I kind of walk through those review criteria as well. So again, it's just over one and a half acres there outlined in red. The proposed use stays commercial. That's what was approved within the plan. There is no drive-through with this, although there is that kind of drive aisle behind the building to the south. And that's more for dumpster location access along with the loading of goods into the business. They also tend to include parking back there for employees. As far as increasing the amount of structures on site, the final site development plan actually is decreasing. The preliminary one had a second building to the east of this one. So there we go. So on this far kind of east side on the preliminary one, there was a second building. In this case, they're just kind of putting that driveway, oh, driveway out onto 62nd Street there. If in the future they wanted to come back with the second building, they would have that option. But right now they're just moving forward with the one located there on the overhead. They aren't decreasing really or increasing any open space with this plan. It does kind of fit very well matching in with that approved preliminary. As far as parking goes, let's see if I oh, there we go, red dot. So this lighter shade gray area is already existing. That is about 20 parking stalls. Everything else on the plan is going to be newly installed with this project. That's an additional 62 parking spaces. That does include the ones just east of the building right here and the couple on the south side. That is a 24% increase from what that preliminary site development plan had. It does include then a total of 82 parking spaces between what's existing and the new. So that is a good increase from what was originally approved to this final plan. We have seen in this overall development, kind of that struggle to maintain those parking numbers. This does meet what we would want a property that's on a straight zoned commercial property with a restaurant and multi-tenant or retail space. It meets what those standard parking lot requirements would be. There is no significant change in public utilities or infrastructure. Development is basically build out. It's just kind of building out these last kind of internal parking lot aisle ways. As far as the elevations go, so north is on the top, south is on the bottom. The south one is what you would see from Highway 151 there. The main anchor of this two unit building would be a restaurant. Again, no drive-through, however, they are looking at putting that enclosed patio towards the east. They're similar to what Daisy's Garage has sitting to the west. The other tenant would be in between the restaurant and Daisy's Garage shown in blue. When we look at the materials, that blue does match what's been used throughout the development further to the west. The gray white, it is a wood tone lap siding series that is included within those design guidelines. Other buildings on the overall development do have white tones. The apartment buildings just to the north of this have, they've got some more of that whiter, same with scooters, some lighter tan, and then they've got the darker gray. have, they've got some more of that whiter, same with scooters, some lighter tan, and then they've got the darker gray. So the colors you can blend with other areas of the development. And then these are showing in the east and west elevations. Again, that east one there on the top does have that enclosed patio structure. And then the bottom on the west, staff did have them kind of relook at this elevation, the way they were kind of blocking the materials of fiber cement board and stone. We wanted it more broken up there in the middle, just to kind of provide a little more interest. Questions of staff?
Questions? Okay. Thank you. All right, the next item is B1 on the same page. Jason, again?
This is more my comfort zone standing in front of you. If you all recall, we brought agreements forward to council in December regarding sprinkler, fire alarm services, fire alarm sprinkler services, fire extinguisher, things like that. This is one for fire alarm monitoring, which we chose to keep separate out of those previous ones for a couple of reasons. Your fire alarm monitoring is, it's a 24-hour call service that takes those alarms when they go off throughout the city buildings and forwards them to the dispatch centers. The one reason for this is it brings consistency and reliability to the company that's providing those services for our city buildings. Secondly, if we would have included this in the alarm inspection and maintenance agreement, not all vendors provide monitoring, so it would have limited our number of vendors that would have been able to bid the previous agreement. So we kept it separate. With this, we're able to get quote from Hawkeye Communications to provide this service for us. Couple highlights on that is they, they are our previous monitoring agency. And they also were the agreement contractor for our annual maintenance and inspection. So they'll get the firsthand experience of inspecting them every year, plus they're the monitoring agency. One other keynote in this agreement was to go with a five-year agreement on this, Hawkeye offered to supply cell dialers, which is part of the receiving portion of the alarms. And they provide a cell dialer for the new Uptown Depot here when it's ready to go at no cost. Any questions on this?
Jason, I was looking at the descriptor, I guess it would be the pricing sheet for what's going to be included in this. And I was just curious, I didn't see any water department facilities in this. Are they already doing something?
The water department doesn't have any fire alarms in their facility. Like Station 3, Fire Station 3 doesn't have a fire alarm. This is just for fire alarms in the city buildings that have fire alarms currently.
Okay, so the water department office doesn't have anything?
Correct. That's been some of the fun pieces of this whole puzzle is which buildings have sprinkler systems, which buildings have fire alarms, which ones require monitoring, things like that, that we're really working better with. I work with Gary in building and Reed in finance and the departments as a whole. So we're really trying to get this all put together and streamline this process for future projects when we have to revisit these in the next few years. And it's been a good effort on everybody's part to try and streamline this process. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, I guess my concern was is just, do we still have gaps that we need to address?
No, that's all driven by the building code and the size of the facilities and things like that, whether or not the alarms are required in those facilities, Grant.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item that's marked is on the last page, D7. Anything prior to D7? Go ahead. We got a question?
I got a question. So this is under Public Works, but it may be more of a question with you, Chief. Kit Smeller, D1, which I know we've talked about in the concerns with the writing on the sidewalks. And I think this is the sidewalk specifically in front of the library. Am I, I think if I'm reading that in the information, am I clicking links on our agenda? If I read that correctly? So my question, I guess, is just simply, how do we enforce that? Is that going to be somebody's reporting? Is this going to be off of cameras on the buildings? Is this, I mean, how, how do we?
It will have to be in person and it's, it'll be difficult. I mean, we'll basically have to have officers on foot or bikes.
We'll see this happening and.
And hope that people get the understanding and the, and the, bring them into what we, what we want them to do.
Are we, will we have a period of education as we introduce this, where maybe we're just warning people for a while that aren't used to this being the policy or, I mean, understanding it? We're used to.
Yeah, it'll be a warning period and then, and then we'll start.
Enforcement?
Siding. Folks, we have to.
Okay. I just saw that on, I was like, I know we've talked about it and I know there's concerns and with the traffic out there, but I know it's also a tricky enforcement situation. So I just want to quick ask what was in front of us. Thank you.
And that's why we're trying to bring it now, is it does take three readings so that we're ready in the spring. We're not doing it halfway through the summer as well. Because even though it's freezing out right now, it won't be long and spring will be here.
Forty's next week. Thank you.
Yeah, so we will have a plan that comes back through our three readings, so we have time. So we're, we're doing parallel paths, or trying to do in the ordinance that takes the three readings. And then we will bring back not only the vertical signs, but there's also logos that we've already purchased through L. Appelling and figure out where those are going to go. That's also going to be on 6th, 7th, 8th, and in the plaza. So.
Okay. All right, anything else prior to D7, sorry, D7 on the last page? Okay, D7, Mike?
All right. So tonight, I just want to give a little bit of background. This is about 86 streets that we're putting no parking on, including the cul-de-sacs. So we're going to get into the details on what a cul-de-sac is and some of that stuff. This was the letter and the tack report was mailed out to 819 households. We've got 60-plus responses, so we've done a good job of putting documents together that has a summary of each response. And then the full response is also available to council as well. So I would recommend taking a look at that. And then we'll see how many residents come in on Thursday as well during the public comment period. But again, if you recall, this is the fire engine backing back down 3rd Avenue. When we have cars parked on both sides, this is kind of where this all stemmed from. So this was back on February of '21 that the apparatus could not make it down 3rd Street north of 29th Avenue. Basically, all streets built after July 1, I don't know what happened to my year, I believe it was 2007, that currently provide for on-street parking will only be allowed on one side, and that's per ordinance 1405. And then we also restrict it in the cul-de-sac. So some of the whys, vehicles are not getting any smaller. So for example, our solid waste fleet, now that we're doing automated collection, we can't just park in the cul-de-sac and bring it to the truck. We got to be able to get the truck where the containers are so that we can pick them up. Our snow plows, again, they're not getting smaller. We have a large jet truck that we have to get in there to jet the lines so we can maintain our sewer systems. And then emergency response. So it was some time ago that you switched the model from responding with SUVs to full apparatuses. And so we need to make sure that we can get where we need to go. And we have to be able to maintain our infrastructures and have a standard of care and setting community standards. So I'm going to give some examples so you guys can see this in real life. So the picture, two pictures on the left is an existing cul-de-sac before we got our, our storm event. So you can see all the cars parked in the cul-de-sac. The top right picture is actually during our snow ban, our, our no parking ban. And you can see there's cars double parked in the cul-de-sac. So I know it's hard to see where the cul-de-sac is, but you can see the mailbox cluster here. So the curb line is right here. You got a truck and a car parked in that cul-de-sac during a parking ban. This is one of our commercial areas, and you can just see the cars lined not only around the cul-de-sac, but on both sides of the cul-de-sac. That makes it very hard to do any of the operations. If the utility company wanted to get back here with that large piece of equipment that they need to, to get that transfer station, that makes it difficult to get back there. These are some pictures from our garbage units. So on 28th Street Court, so this is obviously a Google picture, but this is the pictures that are actually from the vehicle. So because even though you can see these cars are parked away from that intersection, because they're so close to the intersection, we actually had to try and make this turn and then back, back up because we couldn't make that radius to get around the vehicles because they're parked on both sides of the road. This isn't even in the cul-de-sac, this is just at an intersection. Here's another one. So you can see in this case, we got cars parked in the cul-de-sac. So getting that piece of equipment next to those two containers to pick them up and those two containers to pick them up, there's a lot of back and forth that we don't need to be doing that causes potential for accidents when we have to back up. It's a big piece of equipment to be backing up several times to get in the right location to pick those garbage units up. So here's a picture of that unit, and we actually have a video. We can't play it here. But just trying to get that thing squeezed in there to pick up those type of units makes it a challenge. So I do want to talk about a couple of them that are challenges that I, from the comments, we've received almost every resident that lives in a couple of these cul-de-sacs. So this is Park Crest Court, this is right across from our pool. So how it's currently proposed is no parking in the bulb of the cul-de-sac. So this is what the cul-de-sac is, and then the south side. So there would only be parking on the north side. Now realizing that this is 35th Street and there's no parking on both sides of 35th Street, that doesn't give the residents that live in that cul-de-sac a lot of options. But staff's recommendation is to stay with that and stay consistent throughout the city. So I realize that is more of a burden for that particular area than some others, and same with the next one. But you can see like this house, for example, has a four-star, four-stall garage that has to neck down so they can get in there. The mailbox cluster is over here. And then even this residence has added extra width in their driveway behind the sidewalk for RV or additional parking as well. So some of them have done that, some of them won't be able to do that. For example, this property line's right here. So this property owner wouldn't be able to widen their driveway to add more parking. So it is hard for those residents that have multiple cars, kiddos, people coming over to visit. So I'm not saying it's something that's easy, but you're going to see a lot of comments from this one. And then also from Timber Oak Court. This one makes it a little bit more of a challenge because of the center island. That makes it even harder for anything to get around that. So in this case, same thing, we're proposing no parking on the west side in the entirety of the cul-de-sac, and so there will only be parking on the east side. Boyson Road is on the south side, there's no parking allowed on Boyson Road. So again, they don't have a lot of area to park other than their driveways and garages. That area in between is only 24-foot between that center island and the curb and gutter. There is a small gap that goes off the page here that goes to Newcastle. We haven't done all of our research yet, but that could be something. If we could get that sidewalk in, then they could park on Newcastle and at least walk around to get them some more access. As a resident, that's still not ideal, but I'm looking out for the general public. Some of the letters talk about, you know, right now they have a very cohesive neighborhood and they work it out with each other. And that might work now, but in the future, that neighborhood might turn over and then it becomes an issue then. So do we address it now or do we address it in the future?
What becomes the issue, just so?
We can't get vehicles in there. So if somebody, if, if fire can't get in there, I don't want to have to come in here and be like, well, we should have put no parking in there.
Right.
I would much rather be proactive than reactive.
And that wasn't a concern when the neighborhood was built?
We had different regulations then that we, we just didn't, just like we allow parking on both sides. And that's why we had the issue on 3rd Street.
Right.
We weren't raising the bar. So a few modifications that we did do. So some of the resident reached out. So one in particular is Heather Court and El Shire Court. So this is a county subdivision that, again, we were proposing no parking on the cul-de-sac and then taking away parking on one side. With that, we found out for some reason when this county subdivision was built, that the road was actually built much wider than needed to be. And so it can actually have parking on both sides and we can still have access inside. So we do take those considerations where we can and look at it. We're not always 100% perfect. So this is a deviation from what the tack report originally stated to our proposal that is going to be before you for consideration on Thursday. So we're only recommending that we add no parking to the actual cul-de-sac of Heather Court and leaving the rest as is. So the El Shire, that's the new portion, already has no parking established in the cul-de-sac. And that new portion, that's not as wide as the wider section in the county subdivision. The other one is actually just east of our shop, 3rd Avenue Court. Rachi owns both sides of this road. And again, we looked at the width and it is wide enough. So again, we're only recommending no parking in the cul-de-sac and leaving parking on 3rd Avenue Court. So a lot of examples there, but I just want to, you know, call these two cul-de-sacs out in particular because we've heard from almost every resident that lives on those. They are a challenge, but staff's recommendation is to stay with the recommendation. So I didn't know if you wanted to talk through any of that before we have an audience.
Go ahead, Steve.
Just curious, I mean, people loved to be on cul-de-sacs in the past because they don't have traffic going through there. It's quiet. And that's why people design and build cul-de-sacs and want to live on them. So are the size of cul-de-sacs being designed different today compared to where they were 10, 20, 30 years ago? So are there any that can accommodate parking in any way, shape, or form on the, as you call it, the bulb? Or is this just carte blanche? None of them will accommodate any kind of parking with the size of the trucks that we have?
But I can tell you, any of them that are built from, I believe it's 2001 forward, have had no parking on them. They're just not built big enough. So yes, they're nice, but even, for example, the driveway width. So right now, our regulations are if you build a one or two-stall garage, you can have a 24-foot wide driveway. If you have a three-stall or plus, you can have a 36-foot wide driveway, except in a cul-de-sac because there's not enough room. So if you notice even looking at this, you know, you might be able to get one car in there between these two driveways. You can't even get a car between those two driveways. There's just not enough space in that cul-de-sac. I can tell you, when I brought this up with the entire Public Works staff, they asked if we could just make them outlawed and stop building them because they are hard to maintain.
Good luck on that. Developers love it. Here, here's the thing now, is Cedar Rapids doing the same thing?
That I don't know.
Okay.
It was something that we initiated.
Yeah, I understand that, but I go, from a developer's standpoint, this also starts affecting developers on how they lay out and design their areas. And so obviously cul-de-sacs have always been popular in the past for the reasons I described. But as you go forward, developers, given this criteria, may start shying away from them more than they ever would in the past.
But I would say when we do this now, so when we do the public improvements, we get in there right away and put those signs in. So when you're going and you're looking at a lot, you're seeing the no parking sign, so you know what you're getting yourself into. Versus this, we're changing it later.
So what you said earlier, so anybody that's done a development with a cul-de-sac in it since 2007 has already had this restriction.
Yep.
Put on the cul-de-sac. So all the recent ones of the last, if my math is correct, 18 years, 17, 18 years have already had this. So this is really going backwards on all the older ones.
Yeah, bringing all those older streets up to current city standards.
And how many cul-de-sacs are we talking about?
When I counted them quick, there was 86.
86?
Yep. So I might have missed one or two, but I was just counting quick.
So if, understanding that the bulb can't have parking for obvious reasons, if the developer wanted to make the street portion wider so that it could accommodate parking on both streets and have no issue with emergency vehicles, they could do that?
They could.
Yeah, there's nothing that would restrict them from it. So, I mean, if they're worried about the marketability of their lots, they could add the parking by making the street portion wider. Go ahead. I know it's more expensive, but.
Um, first, just quick comment, just looking into this, like what other communities do. Um, I've found over the last week that this is pretty common for a lot of communities to uh, not allow parking in cul-de-sacs, um, unless the longer street is wider. Um, but my question for you, Mike, on Thursday, will you be giving a similar or identical presentation during the public hearing too?
I will give this exact same presentation so that everyone in the audience can hear.
Thank you.
Ready?
Mike, on our, um, new construction, do we have a setback from the sidewalk or from the curb? Is there a minimum or a maximum distance to the, um, I'll say to the drive, to the garage door in case this is a forward-facing garage, but I'm, I'm wondering if in new cul-de-sacs, if the developers would look at setting the houses back further so they have longer driveways.
So I'm going to lean on Nicole on that, but I believe it's twenty-five feet from the right away.
Yeah, so twenty-five feet, um, in most of our residential zoning districts, we do have a few of our larger zoning districts. The SR one, I believe is thirty-five feet to the, um, front-facing. So that could be the garage door. It could be the front of the house. But we do require even when a detached structure gets built today, that whatever direction or property line that overhead door faces, it has to be twenty-five feet setback to allow for that vehicle to fit and not overhang the sidewalk.
Is there, or could there be any more consideration if a house was in a cul-de-sac, that it could have a farther distance setback to give them that parking ability on their own property?
Design-wise and layout-wise, when they go to build, um, the structure, as long as they're meeting the rear setback, they could push a house further back. Um, it's something we could update in code to get that to happen, but it's something that any developer could do today if they wanted to.
So in looking at these lots, because obviously they're intended that, they're intended that way to pie shape the property. If they're willing to give up some of the backyard, they could have a longer
Correct.
Longer setback so that they could get, okay, thank you.
Yeah, as long as they're meeting that rear yard setback for the property.
Yeah.
I'm torn on this. Um, because it's, it's, it feels like, I, I mean, I get it on the, the streets we've looked at. And, and I know the policies put in place on the one side or the other, and I, and I totally understand it. Um, I kind of get it on the bulb part of it because of, I'm looking at it from the, um, emergency response side of it. Can you get a fire truck in there? All that. I, I read through the comments from a lot of residents, um, that provided them and if it's about the, um, garbage pickup, then some people suggested, why can't it just be that day? Then why are we just, why can you, no parking on the street on the day of garbage pickup instead of all seven days, you have one day where it's not allowed? Um, that would probably alleviate some people's angst. Is it more confusing? Yes. But does it ease people into some of that? Yes. Um, totally understand on the go-forward and working with new developers and people understanding when you're buying that. I feel for the people who are, who purchased or built a while ago and now suddenly this change is happening. Um, because, and I, and I'll say this too. Does it drive me crazy, um, even on my own street when somebody has a large driveway and they're parking in the street? Yes, drives me crazy. I'm like, put it, it helps sightlines of kids, it helps with everything, like put your car in the driveway if you have it. So I get torn on that, but I also in reading people's comments on trying to accommodate situations. So I think about, let's say, um, someone's having a graduation party. We all know how crazy the streets get. And I know that there's no way most cul-de-sacs can handle the number of cars that show up for a graduation party and where people were going to park. Um, are people going to be able to holiday evening, something, um, apply for a a waiver like we do, like hooding of the signs for a special event? So hey, I'm going to have a graduation party. We're having a Fourth of July party. Um, we're having some, something, can I apply to have that taken or whatever? Is that an option for residents?
Yep, just like having a block party, they can do a whole harmless request. So it goes through the normal channels and then it goes through all the appropriate departments to review. Um, so it is something, if it's a planned event, um, I would say the response that I got a lot of times when I gave that suggestion to the residents was we have ad hoc Christmas or, uh, festivities, church groups, and we can't do that every week. Um, so obviously certain events are planned, but those, the kids want to have friends over.
Right.
You don't have twenty-four, forty-eight hours to plan ahead on that type of stuff. So. So that suggestion, when I replied to ones, um, I, I did give them the website and everything, so.
Okay. And then what restrictions or risks do we run? And this is more aesthetic that people are putting more pavement down, more cement down on their lots to accommodate more parking, which to me, then you just, we just look like a big cement. Um, you know, taking away the green because someone says, okay, well now I'm adding this lane and I'll go into my yard this. Are there any restrictions on how much of your front yard or your yard can be spent instead of somebody saying I'm going to park in the grass?
I'm going to pass that to zoning too.
Yes, um, we allow you to expand your driveway to a width of twelve feet beyond the width of your garage when it's in front of that garage face, in between the garage face and the property line. Anything that then goes backwards towards the rear of the property, so along the side of your garage, you can go right up to the property line. So that could be wider than twelve feet. But anything kind of in that front of the house space, you get an additional twelve feet. So you could do six and six, you could do twelve, um. And then it also depends on engineering standards for how many garage stalls you have for what, um, that approach looks like. So you might have to angle it if you only have a two-stall and can only be twenty-four feet wide at the property line. Um, but if you have a three-stall, you might be able to take it all the way up to the street.
Okay. And then how are we answering the question that keeps coming up on how much this is costing us in signage and the sign blight um, in the community of no parking signs all over that we're now adding in? Is that, how much is it costing us to put this in?
Um, I don't have those numbers in front of me. I can get them for Thursday.
Yeah, because I, and I, and I get that too. I mean, nobody wants you to look out and just see another no parking sign in front of your house. I mean, do I want cars parked there or do I want a no parking sign? And I, and I get that too. It's not that, that's not a great look. Does it find them all around? No, but more importantly, I hate to look down streets and just see a bunch of signs. It gets, um, we went through this in Uptown during the Blue Zones days and I think we tried to take some of them down because it was so many signs up that people just don't even see them anymore. Um, that's my other concern. So, okay, you've done a really good job of answering my questions. I'll just keep mulling about this one.
Go ahead, Grant.
I know someone real well that lives near two cul-de-sacs and both cul-de-sacs have islands in them. Um, kind of what is our opinion about whether islands ought to be constructed or not?
They should not be.
Is that something that we can, um, prevent from happening going forward in future developments?
Yep.
I, I know, I know that, um, the two cul-de-sacs I'm thinking about, I think they're convenient for stacking snow up on. Um, but I just think that they just add, um, you know, a motion impediment for trucks going, uh, through the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
I, and I, I have witnessed the situation with our new, um, solid waste trucks having to jockey around just to be able to access a couple of the totes that need to be picked up. Um, the other thing I guess I'm wondering about, Mike, this isn't necessarily in your area, but you might have some thoughts on it. Um, cul-de-sac, it, no parking enforcement. I, how does, how does that work? And I, drawing a rather distant, uh, uh, comparison or analogy, it was like, well, we're not doing anything with bicycle licenses. Let's ditch that. If you remember that. Chief, do you have an opinion, uh, on, is it, is it on a complaint basis? Or is it on a experience basis when, um, city trucks are impeded? Kind of what's, what does that look like?
A little of both. I mean, if the officers are out and see it, you know, they'll, they'll do it, but most of the time it's, it's complaint-based. And whether it's the shop calling, saying, hey, we can't get a truck in there because of the cars, um. But a lot of times with the complaints, we don't hear about it till after the fact. Somebody will call and say, hey, this, somebody's always parked out there. And then when we go out, there's nobody there, that type thing. And really I, we're going to look at our fines for parking tickets. It's not much of a deterrent. It's like ten bucks, fifteen bucks. It's not a huge
Right.
Amounts. That's something that finances has got on the schedule to look at, to increase, to give it a little more teeth.
Okay, the, the, so islands and enforcement, we're just a couple of curiosities I had. Thanks.
Steve?
Yeah, I was going to bring up the enforcement aspect as well. My, my comment was going to be, since there's so many uh, households impacted, we should be fairly lenient in the beginning on the enforcement of this, but it sounds with the level of the fines, we're already pretty lenient. So, uh, again, I, I still would hold by that statement that, you know, there's going to, still going to be a lot of people. It's an educational thing that even if I own a house in a cul-de-sac, it's going to take me a while to educate all the different people that may have been visiting me, whether it's friends, family, uh, or whoever that are accustomed to parking there. And so even if, whatever we do with the fines, that's a separate issue. But again, I think it's having the appropriate warning piece you could put on there to stick on the car uh, and let them know that here's the new regulation or ordinance, uh, and abide by it. But I, I would have, I would support some leniency, but look at the fines on a separate issue. But I think it's going to be a a, a while for everybody to get accustomed to this change if it's, if it's approved.
I think it's, it's probably similar to what we did with the snow ban last week. Uh, you know, it was no parking. We just started, that was only the second time I think we've ever used that.
Yeah.
Uh, first time this year, we went out, uh, rather than just towing cars, officers were going up knocking on doors, telling people, hey, there's a snow ban. You can't park. Uh, I think we did seventy some odd cars in the middle of the storm to get people to come out and move them into their driveways uh, to get them out of the streets.
I was actually, I was actually caught by that, by the way. I was helping, going over to a friend's house uh, due to his situation and doing his driveway with the snow. And there was a police officer actually going, there was about five cars in the street going house to house. And he asked me if I lived in that house. I said, no, I'm just going to be here for about thirty minutes and I'm out of here. He said, okay. Yeah, so I did see that in effect, so.
It would be somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
And I do want to remind you that this is the third area that we've done. So if you recall, the West Eighth area, uh, that area back there was the first area that we did. And then basically Tenth Street, Seventh Avenue and Indian Creek was the second area. Um, and so after we got those signs up, same thing, there's a learning curve there. Um, but we had pretty good compliance, so.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Mike. Last time is Nicole with Encroachment Eastman.
Hi again. So the applicant, um, Mix Global Kitchen is requesting to expand their business to include Korean barbecue. And with this request to allow for that expansion of his menu, um, the Encroachment Eastman agreement is included for the alleyway in between Mix and Marion Antiques there. It does allow for two exhaust fans, shown in the lower left-hand corner there, to extend out into that ten-foot alley. This is kind of the exterior, that exhaust fan would be the exterior part of, um, a fire suppression system. So this photo on the screen is an example of what that exhausting system looks like from the inside. So winner, the red box. Right here, you can kind of see, um, the mechanical apparatus kind of hanging down from the ceiling. Um, this is kind of where the cooking surface happens for that Korean barbecue. That is the fire suppression, um, on the inside of the building. So what this request is for that exhaust fan, that would be associated with this part, but on the exterior of the building. It would be about sixteen and a half to eighteen inches, um, from the face of the wall in the alleyway and the diameter of both fans, um, each at thirty inches. It would be about ten feet from grade. Um, so the images here on the screen are kind of, as you would be entering the alley, either from Seventh Avenue or from kind of the back alley by the city-owned parking lot. Um, the red circles show where those locations of the exhaust fans would be as you enter into the alleyway. As you roll then down the alleyway and get closer, um, you can kind of see where they'd be located. So as you're, um, going from Seventh Avenue north, that first one, you've been up in the alleyway recently looking. I took these right after the snowstorm. Um, the first kind of bricked-in window is where the first one is from the front face of the building on Seventh Avenue. That's about forty feet into the alleyway. And then the second one is about seventy feet in from that front face along Seventh Avenue. And that second one is where the first glass-blocked window is located currently. We've worked with, um, Mix and the business owner, along with, um, staff, including fire, building, planning for these, they are meeting the requirements that are in place for fire as well as for the building division based on the exhaust fan that is being proposed at this time. Um, that's eighteen inches of clearance around them for combustible materials. If it's a non-combustible material, can be, have something kind of right up to it. The staff is, um, recommending approval of these exhaust fans to allow for the business to expand their menu for Korean barbecue, as it's submitted today without any screening. The staff feels that at this point, since we're, don't have any plans to move forward with art in the alleyway, that is something in the future, we've got in our Uptown Master Plan, that this alley does have potential for murals, artistic lighting, things like that, maybe even entry points, that screening would be addressed at that time, um, versus this time.
And I, I just have one little piece to add to this. As Nicole just said about that future potential of artway in the alley, whether it's interactive or passive, either way, if it would be a mural, these, in art, in doing our research, Gary actually did quite a bit of research on the fans and whether they could be painted. Um, this, he was able to contact the manufacturer that we know of today based on, um, the request that it, they can, uh, paint these in-house, um, like a tan, tannish color. Um, in the encroachment agreement, it is something that we could highlight. We do have in there that it needs to be a, um, consideration for a mural or some type of art in the future. Um, if there is something that we need to want to be a little more specific on, um, we're able to do that as well.
Thank you. Um, it's great that we took that extra step uh, to check that out. Um, all the other utilities that are in there on, on the walls, do they have easements too?
They don't.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I mean, I don't see the difference between these and everything else that's on those walls. So I mean, I don't see the difference between these and everything else that's on those walls. Go ahead.
So exactly what is going to be exhausted out of these fans, and if I'm walking by one of these fans and something is exhausted, how, am I impacted by that, or what is the impact on somebody walking near one of these as something is exhausted?
You could get hungry. Sure, go for it.
Because you said fire suppression system.
There is a fire suppression system integrated into the exhaust system, so this is an exhaust system, a mechanical system required by code through the building and fire department. Similar to many commercial kitchens, Steve, that they're doing their cooking in their kitchen, and it takes fumes out and away, and there there is a suppression system integrated in this. This is a kind of unique one that we've worked with for two years with Kyle in the Mix to get him to this point, that's code compliant and make this work. As far as the exhaust, the fan exhausts on the exterior of the building, those are common with many other commercial kitchens and things like that. The one thing I would say with this style of cooking that he's doing, it, it may not, this style would not give off as much exhaust and stuff as a standard commercial kitchen would.
Not combustible or grease-laden as you would.
Okay, so it's more of an odor.
It's vapor.
Vapor is not any, any, I was thinking, fire suppression, you know, fumes or anything like that that might be exhausted out, so that is not the case with this?
Right. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I know the mayor's intimately aware of, about the amount of time and effort that the fire department especially has spent working with Kyle at Mix on this. This was an idea that, as Deputy Chief Hanson mentioned, Kyle brought before us about two years ago, and trying to work to meet the spirit of the code. We had testing done, and just the, the style of cooking that's done, it's not going to admit, and, and so I, I'm really proud of our team for sticking with it and trying to find a, a solution that works in support of a business that, that wants, that, that wants to do something innovative and different. So as Nicole mentioned, we're recommending this, you know, the, a lot of time and effort was, was put into this, really, really proud of our team on this, and, and I do appreciate the, as the mayor said, the extra effort to identify and give council the option on, with respect to that screening.
One more thing I'd like to add, along with that, you're concerned about, concerned about vapors and such, Steve. These hood systems and stuff do come with code requirements that require cleaning and maintenance every, depending on their use, three months, six months, or annually. So those, those systems and things do get cleaned inside and out from professional service companies.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Nicole, can you go back to the depiction of the alleyway? I, I just wanted to comment, Mayor, I think you inquired about the utilities that are on that wall. I think those are probably there in accordance with our franchise agreements and terms of service for there, but I do want to say I, I think these two fans will be a complement to the utilities, facilities there, so.
Randy?
Yeah.
Do we, Nicole, do you have any ideas to the decibel ratings or how loud those fans are? I'm, I'm, I have a little bit of knowledge of those, I don't think they're going to be super loud, but I was just given on their size. I didn't know if anybody knew how loud they were going to be.
We don't, but that's something we can look into and get back to you on.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess I, I would be interested in knowing if anybody has any objection, or you know, has a strong objection to this. Okay. Yeah. This has been a long process. Do appreciate the patience of the staff in working with Kyle. It's also been a long process for Kyle in, in that business, and they've stuck with it, and they've, you know, tried to find the solution, and they spent a lot of money, and I'm glad that we finally reached a point where everybody's happy and they can add value to what Uptown offers in terms of choices for, for dining. It's, it is something that doesn't exist anywhere in our area, and so it's a, it's a it's a, a good thing that we have worked with them for this whole time and, and finally came to a resolution that, that works. So thank you to everybody involved. Anything else you want to add, Nicole, or is that it? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the closed session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding real estate transactions as permitted under section 21.51J of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn a closed session regarding real estate transactions. We have the legal counsel's statement, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section 21.51J.
Okay, any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mayor Ablosley?
Yes.
Ms. Mensah?
Yes.
Mr. Sternak?
Yes.
Okay, we adjourn the closed session. Thank you for joining us.